I thought that was just eight through twenty five, twenty two.
Twenty two, twenty three is the public hearing.
We got different comments of your, sorry. Yeah, so I'm sorry, let's see if we can get you on our page. So this will be item number, public hearing, item number twenty three. Item number twenty two, oh, I'll take these two. So, just for the record, what I'm going to do is go ahead and go with the public hearing portion, item number twenty three and twenty four. And then I'm going to be moving tennis, which is item number twenty eight forward. So when we get to that point, you guys will be first up on the regular portion of the agenda. So if I can move to the, I know in the public hearing related to item number ninety three, request a tentative parcel map certificate to create two blocks at ninety three Camino porras porros. Lisa?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a tentative parcel map certificate for the subdivision to create two parcels at ninety three Camino porras porras. Each parcel would be over one acre an area. The existing residence and detached garage would not meet the setback requirements if the tentative map were approved. So a condition has been included in the tentative map certificate, which requires that these structures be demolished prior to the recordation of the final map. The proposed lots are of sufficient size and shape to allow the construction of two main, two new residences, one on each lot. The proposed subdivision does comply with the minimum R1A zoning requirements, as well as the residential land use policies contained within the general plan. Both parcels meet the minimum subdivision standards that are established in the zoning code, as well as the subdivision ordinance. The development of two single-family residents on one acre minimum lots is consistent with the development pattern within that neighborhood as well as town line. I believe there was a question from a council member about the sewer line being brought up to code with this development, and that means a requirement of the subdivision. In order to let you know, the process is that, at the stage where it gets to the building permit, the building official requires a, what's called a real serve letter, be submitted from all public utility companies, so that the PG may be sewer water, indicating that they are able to have a servant in conditions that they have. So it would be at that stage that all utilities, including the sewer line, will be brought up to current code requirements if necessary. Staff did receive comments from two neighbors as part of the planning commission process. One of the neighbors expressed concern with the protection of hair distrays, construction impacts, and increased traffic. Any future tree removals that would, are be, would be required to comply with the town tree removal ordinance. And all constructions also require to meet town ordinances, as you know, relating to parking and hours and noise. And further, the construction of one net new residence would not significantly increase traffic within that neighborhood. The applicant has met with the neighbors onsite in an attempt to address those concerns. Staff in the planning commission recommend the city council approve the tentative parcel map certificate. And I'm available to answer any questions, and I believe the property engineer is here as well? Yes, thank you, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any council members would like to have a question to staff?
Question right now. I'll get a comment.
I do have a question. I know you told me that sewers. Can you tell me where that sewer line goes? I was sitting forever with the town manager, and I just had a problem locating it, seeing where it goes through the proposed subdivision.
We didn't require the utilities to be located on this map, so I could have the property owner explain the sewer line?
I actually don't know.
Okay. Then we can follow up with the engineer if you'd like.
Okay. I guess there goes my question.
We can see the one in the street, we just can't see the one across the properties.
So with the, you know, maybe it's just a pet peeve of mine, and I understand that utilities would be reconsidered at the time. But the idea is, and I believe that the original structure on this property is really early nineteen hundreds. So obviously, the sewer line that's employed there probably, and if it crosses the parcel in front, my concern is that if we don't have that line redone, then the neighbor that, or the person that buys that front parcel, or yourself, would potentially have a lateral crossing it. And if a failure occurs in an existing old line, then we got a problem. And the last thing I want is issues related to sewers on properties.
Yeah, so it would typically run up the, the access point, and if it would have to cross the front parcel, they would be required to get an easement in order to do that. You can't just cross somebody else's property with a sewer line. But that's something we would typically require at the building permit stage, because they don't know the exact location of where the house is going to be.
Right, but in this case, where there's an existing sewer line, and there's a proposed property that would be put in front of this, so therefore I'm assuming that there's an existing sewer line that's going to cut across a parcel that we're creating.
They may have to run a new line out to the street.
Okay.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Through that access point, down the driveway.
My bottom line is, is that I just want to make sure that we don't have a problem with the sewer line because of the issues and the nineteen hundred vintage infrastructure. And I'd like to make sure that the person that is in that front parcel doesn't inherit a potential problem. So simply noted. Okay, any other question? I guess that was the only question, huh? So any public questions related to this? No public comments related to this public? So I will go ahead and close the public comments, bring it back to council. Council members, any final thoughts? Oh, you even hear that. That's a woman who was sincere, I think.
Well, you know, I love this piece of property. I, before moving to Atherton, I lived down the street in Miller Park, and we would run up this road, you know, Porras porras, stumbling around and everything. And for years and years, I've been looking at this lot and thinking, ah, what a beautiful piece of property. It's so beautiful, with the, how lucky, and somebody really should do something with it, you know, because the house is so old and so ancient. But, and subdividing it seems like higher and best, better use of it, so because, and keeping it one plus acres is, is good. My, my concern is with the dotted buildable area that, you know, is a little odd in the front portion, and then the one on the rear portion, that, the one in the rear portion, that the house, the proposed resident, the print, and I know this is a placeholder, and it doesn't look like that would be that size when you're all set and done. That the house could be all the way to the edge of that fifty-foot set, side setback, is that right?
Yeah.
Which would go adjacent to the, I guess, Woodson's, how, property, is that right? Am I reading that right? That little angle? Anyway, lands of Woodson? And then, yeah, there you go. And it just, I just, if, when you build the house, I know that's the buildable area, it could be more centered on the property and with consideration of the existing neighbors. But, and then the driveway that is coming off, the, the flag lot, if you will, what I guess I'm seeing is the curve, the ninety-foot length minimum to the front setback? Is that like a hammerhead? What is that on the?
Right, that would be the fire department turnaround.
The fire department turnaround, okay, all right. And all of that is the back property, and what I was calling the back property? Okay. Well, certainly, there's going to be a lot more impervious structures put onto this property than there is now. And I guess, to the extent that you could use herbious concrete to let it percolate down, I know that we've got drainage requirements for keeping irrigation and water on the property, but I would just like to say.
Mr. Mayor? Please. I need to, I guess.
Bring me in.
Well, the referee.
He's going to tell me I can't say things like this.
You can't all put conditions on it, it's subdivision of.
I'm not putting conditions.
Well, you can't make suggestions about future conditions, because the person has a right to bring to you subdivision of lands, and it shows to you certain things like the buildable area. Any place in that buildable area, a future, a future buyer of the property is allowed, same rights as you have on your property and anybody else has on their, to utilize that in a way that meets the town's codes. And you're already starting to dictate deviations from those codes, and I would caution you, don't go there. If you like the plan, because it's good, highest and best use for the property, do so, but try to stay away from designing the project or designing the lot split, because it's already been done for you.
Bill, you're likely choosing colors with it.
Yeah, exactly.
Or chairs.
Or chairs.
Oh, come on, anyway.
It'd be a long process.
That was just my, okay, anyway.
Okay.
That's my comments.
Wonderful comments, except for the impervious surrounding. Any other?
Absolutely, there's nothing there.
You have to know, we've been dealing with chairs. Sorry. So, you know, I, I just, I just want to reiterate the super issue, and I know that some people have raised some concerns related to placed trees, and so I am sure that, you know, our requirements on if you remove trees and whatever required to replace trees, I'm sure that'll comply. And it's a beautiful site, and I think that at this point, I don't know. Oh. Already did. Already did. And I'm already closing the door with this. So George, you need, any staff direction, that's probably?
A motion to approve the PFP.
A motion to approve, so moved in a second. Second. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you for attending this evening. I hope all goes well. Well, no, it will go well.
Yes.
We don't hope, we know it will. It's a beautiful property. Item number twenty four, public hearing recommendation to increase to commercial refuse rates for the town of Atherton. Finance Director, Robert.
Evening, Mayor.
Good to meet you.
Members of the council, it's been a while. Today is a public hearing on recommended, recommended increase to the commercial refuse rates in the town of Atherton. Recommendation is one is to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed increase in commercial refuse and organic rates for the town of Atherton. And if appropriate, introduce the tax ordinance for the first reading and ordinance of the city council of the town of Atherton, setting refuse collection rates for commercial rate collection. Just to give you a background, this BWMA refuse subcommittee of the town met on May seventh and July eighth to discuss the town of Atherton's commercial refuse and organic rates. The subcommittee discussed and recommended an adjustment to the commercial refuse and organic rates, as well as correction to the rate schedule to include commercial bins. The subcommittee recommends that residential garbage refuse rates be maintained at the current levels until a revised collector rate impact project is done in the fall of this year. At this time, they'll never commit any change, it's the commercial rates for refus, refus and organics. So tonight's hearing is a required hearing under the Prop 218. Pursuant to the requirements of Prop 218, staff mailed out notices forty-five days prior to tonight's hearing to all refuse service billing addresses with commercial services only. If there is no major protest, then the rates can be imposed by an ordinance approved by two-thirds vote of the members of the council, under the health and safety code fifty-four seventy-one. After this fact, the town will publish and post notices of proceedings. As of tonight, the town has not received any written protest for commercial rate increases. So to the analysis, during the committee's analysis, it was proposed and recommended to do the following: raise the four, six, and eight yard bins to reflect the town's current rate structure, and review the commercial rates and adjust the rates by five percent. Assuming a five percent commercial rate adjustment, set the organic rates at fifty percent less the commercial rate. So during its May seventh meeting, the committee discussed the commercial rate adjustments. Particular attention was paid to four, six, and eight yard bins. While the town rate structure currently, the town currently offers this rate structure, it currently does not include these bins. We do have a commercial bin rate structure, but these bins are not included. Recology has offered these bins, so if the town thought it was appropriate, the committee thought it was appropriate, to add the tiers to the town rate structure. For commercial bids of this category, the subcommittee proposed the rate structure within the tax ordinance, to ensure that the rates of these bins were with the town's existing structure. The town currently has ten commercial accounts. So the committee recommends the commercial rates to be adjusted by five percent, including these new adjustments for the four, six, eight yard bins, and also fifteen percent less the commercial rate. The adjustments are reflected in the attached ordinance. So with the inclusion of the four, six, and eight yard bin rates, the productive five increase, five percent increase of the refuse rates and commercial organic set at fifteen percent less the proposed rates are as follows in the table. For the ninety-six yard gallons, at a hundred and ninety-four dollars. The one yard gallon, one yard is two hundred and ten dollars. The two yard is at four hundred and twenty, three yards, five hundred and eighty, the four yard, six hundred and fifty, six yard, eight hundred and seventy, and the eight yard is one thousand one sixty. And the organic rates are fifteen percent less than these refuse rates. The subcommittee and the staff believe that in order to meet increased demand for diversion and growing cost of disposal, that these are the appropriate rates to set. Again, attached is the ordinance adjusting only the commercial refuse and organic rates. The fiscal impact of this is of these ten commercial accounts, five have organic bins, the increase of the commercial rates by five percent with an amount to three thousand eight hundred and five dollars more per month, or forty-five thousand six hundred and seventy per year. The organic bins set at the fifteen percent less the commercial rate, with an amount of two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars more per month, or thirty-two thousand fourteen per year. As waste diversion is becoming a bigger priority, and the cost for diversion increases, it's important to ensure that the commercial rates are set accordingly. So the total increase for refuse and organics for the commercial services only is seventy-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-fourths per year. Back to this portion of the report, I just have a quick summary on future activities subcommittee. We will include an analysis rate, we will do a rate surplus and shortfall analysis that is provided by Recology. We will also meet as a subcommittee, as required, to review our refuse collection disposal rates. The town, as you know, is responsible for setting these rates every year. So again, that's one of the things we will do, is monitor and review the refuse operations, cost, how they're set. Beginning with the great year of two thousand thirteen, SBWMA decided that they will allow agencies to have surplus, that have surplus balances to request a refund of that surplus, and hold it with the rate stabilization fund. If we have a shortfall, then we would have to true up that amount with, with Recology. As of two thousand thirteen final rate year, the town of Atherton has a shortfall bound to a hundred and thirty-six thousand. The coming months, we work with the committee, we come to the, the refuse committee, and we will create language for changes to the franchise agreement regarding if there's a refuse surplus or shortfall, and also how that would be remitted back to the town if we did have a surplus. Also, we will be investigating possibility of imposing a minimum service level rate that would be in place for residents to vacate the premises for either construction, vacation, or other long-term periods. With that, that's the conclusion of my public hearing.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions from the council?
Just a comment, just in case people wanted to know. The commercial diversion of organics is one of the areas that's a big, big need, and an area that actually is ignored, and so all of the jurisdictions in the SBWMA have been asked to, to try and find a way to improve the organics diversion, and so that's why we went ahead and changed the fifteen percent, and then also as an adjunct to what Robert reported. The SBWMA has a jurisdiction-wide requirement for the charging of interest if we have a shortfall, but if there's a surplus, how we pay off, if we're, if we're sitting in a surplus situation, how we reimburse, if we undercharge without being charged interest is what, is what we need to finalize in the next couple of weeks, so. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Seeing no public comments on this item, I'm going to close it, bring it back to council. Any final comments, call it council.
To me.
Please, councilman Lewis.
A, a couple of years ago, I thought we had surpluses that we, so it's kind of surprising to me that we currently have a shortfall.
If I'm, me, it's that question.
I don't believe that item's on the agenda tonight, is it?
It's the surplus within the refuse rates.
Just within the, the two that are, two that are being talked about?
Yeah, just the rates.
Just those two.
Just the money that.
We got it.
I'm just.
It's a referee? You have a surplus.
Wait, yes. Based, two thousand thirteen is the, the base year where SBWMA says, this is the year where if you have a surplus, you can, you can request a refund. If there's a shortfall, then it's an indication to look at rates. So this is just based up, off of the two thousand thirteen year, just got finalized this past spring. But going forward, you're correct, we do have a surplus, but that will be, that will not take place until the two thousand fourteen rates get audited and finalized, which will not happen until spring of two thousand fifteen. So there's no consequence of concern right now, because we have a hundred and thirty-six thousand shortfall, shortfall. Because of two thousand fifteen, we will get it true up, but that's something that we always continue to monitor. Every fall, we meet with SBWMA, and we verify what is the requirement for the service for disposal for the contractor, and then what is it that our revenue is bringing in. So, great question, but yes, for two thousand thirteen, there is a shortfall.
And the shortfall surplus analysis is a snapshot point in time, it's not a?
It's not a cumulative.
Correct.
And so, we did look at, if I could just add, add on, Robert, you know, yourself and George, and Carrie and I looked at, actually, going out to the end of the, to two thousand twenty, at the end of this contract term, and, and our goal is to, to manage that rate stabilization fund that is based on our surplus, so that we don't have to adjust the rates, or if we do, it's, it's in the out years, and it's, and it's a very soft adjustment to be in preparation for potentially a contract term, term out, like we had to face with the ALI deal, but there's not a jeopardy, we're not in jeopardy of having to raise rates this year or next year.
Right.
That mean refuse component.
Correct. As you can tell, Councilman Whitmer and myself love to talk trash. I had to.
You've been waiting.
I've been waiting all day.
I said I'd be a gentleman.
All right. So seeing that, would I entertain a motion here to approve the recommendation as a first reading?
So.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Wow, we got the trash. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to item number twenty-eight, tennis facility management selection. That is going to be on the regular portion of the agenda. And I believe we're going to have Mike Hushwater, thank you, or Steve.
No.
Any? Councilmember?
You might want to raise that microphone up.
Yeah, he was upset for. He was upset for my. Councilmembers, Mary Lee.
It's a pleasure. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about our tennis facility management selection. On May twenty-first, council approved an RFP for our tennis management services at Holbrook Palmer Park. June twenty-fifth, three proposals were received for this task. Staff put together a selection team using staff, residents, park and rec personnel, committee members, as well as even a tennis key holder. Player Capital Tennis was selected to negotiate a contract for court management by unanimous decision, after going through that process. These negotiations included the, we had one of the contract negotiations with Player Capital Tennis. They included things from the court use, amount of courts to be used, business points, including what the town and contractor would be responsible for, some of the high points, lots of tennis experience from this group, Player Capital Tennis. They also have a ton of Atherton users, Atherton residents, that, that played a big part in the decision we made. They're not too big or too small, they were actually the medium-sized company that we dealt with. We figured they would be a good fit for the park. They had the only, they were the only proposer to come in with a reservation system, already in the can, that they could bring in and, and take care, best care of our current park tennis key users. And their proposal to pay the town a flat fee on a monthly basis, with our town staff being as small that it is, not having to go around and make sure who was playing and who wasn't, and having to monitor court usage, that worked out really, really good for us. The contract will be for the flat fee of forty thousand dollars for one, for the first year. It is a one-year contract with an option of two, three years to follow. The contractor also promises, promises us fifteen thousand dollars for, if should we choose an additional year extension for use of, for use in court maintenance or improvements. Staff does recommend Player Capital Tennis be approved by council. At this point, I'd like to introduce Michael Jessup, he's the owner of Player Capital Tennis, I'd like to give him a chance to, to speak with you. At this point, and he can tell you a little bit about his program, and we can do some questions and answers.
Please.
Thanks for, thank you, thanks for having me. I'm Michael Jessup, principal of Player Capital Tennis. First off, I'd like to thank Steve, Bob, and Bill, and the rest of the Parks and Rec Commission, that support and trust that myself and Player Capital Tennis have the ability and know-how to bring the best possible programs and events to Holbrook Palmer Park. One of the things that we'd like to do going forward, one, is bring high-quality programs to Holbrook Palmer Park. Two, great facility management, making sure the courts are clean, making sure that everything's safe, and hopefully upgrading the courts eventually, once we get more users out there, and as well as creating the most access possible for the most amount of people out there, through customer service, listening to key holders and community members. And three, to strengthen and bring together the community through the game of tennis. Yeah, I'm not always here, if you guys have any questions, you know, to answer, the doors open for all the tennis community, as, you know, our biggest goal is to keep everybody happy, make more people play tennis, and everybody wins.
Beautiful one. You can teach anybody the tennis. Any questions from council, please?
Yeah, I've got a few questions, if that's okay.
Yeah.
I'll start, and then if I need him, he's your backup. Are they for Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike's around.
So, obviously, you know, there was, I guess, a clinic just, I guess, last week or before, I guess, on Friday, not last week, but the week before, on Friday, that caused some concern in the community, because people indicated to me that they came out to use the courts, and the courts were all taken with a substantial number of people taking lessons before the contract was signed, so I guess what I hope to do is, is understand a little bit more, you know, how we're going to, you know, treat the, the key holders, because that, that did send a shockwave to a, a number of tennis key holders, and, and they're now thinking that perhaps they're not going to have a chance. So, as I go through your proposal, you know, I see some, some items, for example, it says that, that you're going to have three courts, you know, two courts available, you know, Sunday through Friday, and then three courts available Saturday mornings. Saturday afternoons, is that going to be all lessons, or is there, are you not holding anything open for key holders during that time?
Yeah, well, we're, it's kind of a broad base, you know, from listening to the usage, it sounds like Saturday morning is the, the biggest use time, so we're trying to limit to the three courts. Main, the main time that we are using the courts is after school, that's where the most amount of kids are, at three-thirty to five-thirty time. From my gathering, most of the people, the key holders right now, are in the mornings and stuff, there's going to be no conflicts at all.
Well, yeah, that's, it's, and, and, you know, as you pointed out, I, I think that your time slot, three-thirty to, to five-thirty is, is a good time for, for the lessons, but, but there, there are, is a faction of people that, you know, that work, and they come home, and then they want to get on the courts, so.
Right.
If you're still on the courts at six, six-thirty, that, that causes some consternation, so. You do have, you say that you're going to put in a, a, I assume it's going to be an online registration system, but.
Correct.
We do have a number of residents here that are internet adverse, don't, don't use, don't use a PC, they may have one in their house. So is there going to be some sort of dial-in, or be like a voice-to-text capability, where they can make a reservation by using a phone, because that, I think, is a requirement?
Yeah, they can call in and, and use a phone, it's just going to be a little bit more difficult for them, just because there's not going to always be someone to answer the phone. If their time's not available, or playing phone tag, it's going to be difficult for them to see when a court is available, if the time they didn't want is available. is available. You know, one of the things we can do too is, you know, partner with the town and say, you know, give somebody, if there's someone extra at the town, they can call in, they can look on the internet and just see, hey, these are the times open, and somebody can reserve it for them, you know. Or they can stop by the courts where they're all the time, and we can make a reservation there in person for them as well.
Okay. So, well, I, I just urge you to, to look into that, because there are some people that don't use PCs.
Well, I mean, if there's some, and I think those are, you know, relatively small, and we can always work with them and stuff, you know, that, I mean, we're trying to get everybody on the court, and, you know, we'll make sure they, they get, get their court time.
Okay. The, I guess, another question and concern that I've heard, and, and it may just be misreading, you know, what your proposal is, but you say, you know, an Atherton resident key holder will be able to make a reservation seven days in advance, a non-Atherton resident key holder five days in advance. And, and, and I can understand you're trying to give the preference there, so that, that's good. But many of the people that I've spoken to said that they thought that there'd always be two courts available for the key holders, and they are more interested in, you know, the two days in advance, they would know that they, you know, that their compadres are available to play, so they may not be able to plan seven days in advance. So there's concern, and they would, some of the people have said, you know, we'd prefer to be able to get a court reserved one day in advance, and there's a fear, based on what they've heard, is that if after the fifth day, so you've got seven days.
Right.
Then five days, and then let's say no one made a reservation, then that your team could go ahead and block all the courts for, for lessons, and then they'd be left wanting.
No, they, they can still, no, those are open courts, and then basically, you know, if, that nobody's using them, maybe we spread out, and if someone comes on, then, you know, we, we give them a court. So it's not that those courts disappear.
Yeah, so I, I think that we just have to be sensitive, you know, I spoke to Alan about this as well. There's going to be a betting in time, but I think that there's a perception here that, you know, you could be bringing a lot of kids and a lot of lessons, because I know that you're operating in many different areas, but there's, there's a concern that potentially, they're going to be locked out if they don't do this seven days in advance, and they don't, and many of them have said, you know, Bill, we don't work this way.
Right, right.
You know, I find out that my neighbor's in town, and we say, let's go play tennis, or, hey, how about doing it this Tuesday, and then they shoot off, and, and they're, well, sorry, you didn't do it seven days or five days in advance, so we booked it.
Right.
So hopefully that won't be the problem, but there's going to have to be some.
Right. Well, I think a lot of it is just about communication, you know, and that's like, I've done this before at Oak Creek, and we have three courts there, and, you know, it's really about maximizing all the different demographics. We've got Stanford students there, we've got senior group there, we've got the working professionals there, and then we have some juniors there, and.